We start every meeting with a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Tonight, I'd like to ask Councilperson Candace Hinton to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Councilperson Nazar.
Present.
Councilperson Bowland.
Present.
Councilperson Chalos.
Present.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Dinkle.
Present.
Councilperson Hinton.
Present.
Councilperson Loudermilk.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Councilperson Thompson.
Here.
All are present.
We also have a tradition of having 30 minutes or up to 30 minutes of time for public comment on items not on the agenda. There was a sign-up sheet out front, but if you didn't sign up, you'll still get an opportunity to talk if you want to. First name on the list is Herb Rooks. Welcome, Herb.
Well, I'm here because Saturday I was at the courthouse. I saw one councilperson there. I have a couple of friends that stayed. I ripped my leg open and had to leave. They saw another councilperson there. Where were the rest of you? This issue is extremely important to the citizens of Terre Haute, and you couldn't bother to show up. The other beef I have is I volunteer as much as possible for this city, but the political parties, especially the head of the parties, does as little as possible to give outreach to members of the community. And you all better work harder, because all I can do is tell the people I know of how little concern you have for the citizens. That's it.
Thanks for your comments, Herb. I was proud to be at the protest on Saturday.
I know.
I saw you there on your bicycle.
Yeah.
And there will be another one, not this coming Saturday, but the following Saturday, the 19th of April. I don't know the time yet, but it'll also be at the Vigo County Courthouse.
Good. That way, the council can schedule it in on their business.
Thank you, Herb. Next up, Gary Fowler.
Hi. I'd like to talk to you about a water situation we have down on Hino Avenue between Canal Road and 10th Street. Not only us, but the people on the other side of Interstate 70 on the north side along Pugh Avenue. Our water ain't good. I know you guys went up to Terretown, and, you know, they got water now. You had some money left over that was diverted to another project, maybe Demme Park, that probably should have been looked at, other situations such as ours, that they won't give us city water, but they got it in Terretown. So, anyway, our water is just not good. There's a lake at Canal and Davis behind the old steel company there. It's a great big bucket. Well, the county, I believe, or whoever's doing the highways, they're dumping the old roadway, all the demolition that they're doing along the interstate and all that into it. It used to be a pretty good-sized lake, deep. I think that's probably where we're getting our water from. Now, it's probably down to two-thirds the size it was, and I've been told maybe three foot deep. So, one of these days, we're going to run out of water where we're at. If that's the case, our only option is, if there is water there, to drill a well, which, you know, that's seven, eight thousand bucks. Where are you going to get that? So, in the long run, another problem, too, is when you lose electricity, which recently has been pretty often. If you're on well, you can't run a well pump. You can't go to the bathroom. You know, back last year, or whenever it was, they had that storm, we was without power for like seven or eight days. Well, you're going to McDonald's, you're going to the regional hospital, you use a bathroom. You know, you can't, you don't have a restroom. So, without what they call city water or municipal water, however you want to put it, you're kind of sunk. So, with the funds that they're diverting everywhere else, could you guys maybe take a look at us and see about getting us some water? Ms. Hinton, our councilperson in that area, she's been terrific. We've talked to her. She's answered questions. She's called us. She's in the process of trying, but it's going to take her while. Just not her. It's going to have to be all of yous together. So, that's what we're asking. If you can kind of step up and give us some help here. Another issue we have, we can't get gas. Going towards Canal on Hino at 13th Street, where the city sewer lift station is, great big gas main there, which is basically, if you go city blocks, maybe a block and a half. We can't get gas. You know, they gave us the sewer probably, well, 13 years ago. Why they didn't run a water line down there, I don't make any sense, but every time we try to talk to somebody to get something done, it's kind of put on the back burner, except for Ms. Hinton here. So, can you maybe get her and help and figure something out here? She's our go-to. She's been great. So, we're kind of depending on her to maybe get you guys together and you guys listen to her, you know, and let's see what we can do here. So, anyone got any questions? I'll be a moderator.
Gary, thanks for your comments. We're aware of the water issue especially, and we have talked with the mayor about that back when we were talking about ARPA money and all.
Yeah.
I'm confident that we'll get something done for you eventually.
Okay. Well, we appreciate it. And like I say, you know, it's kind of sad when you got to run to a neighbor's business to use the restroom in a power outage, you know? I mean, I don't know how many of you are on well or on city water, but, you know, kind of put yourself in our position, you know, if you have to do it, would you want to? You know, and it's just kind of a basic need. You know, it's not a want, it's a need. So, you know, if you could do something, we'd really appreciate it.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Chalos, can the mayor come up? Do you mind, Meyer? I respond.
Thanks, Councilman Chalos, for calling me in the principal's office. Hey, Gary, thank you for explaining the issues in that block. Just to kind of set the expectations, we do not have what is called city water. It is owned by a company called Indiana American Water, which is a private utility. So, when the gas line went down Center Point, great, great company, also privately owned, we cannot mandate that the water company also extend. Our project in Terretown, for example, we needed about 85% of the residents to choose, to opt in, to let us connect them to Indiana American Water, commonly known as city water. We got about 50% because there's concerns about fluoride. So, we're running into issues with the private company, because the legislation they passed to allow cities to try to partner and do this has gotten overly and overly complicated. And I say this to really set expectations of, we will continue to work with that private company, but unfortunately, when a state like Indiana gives its utilities to private companies, they focus on shareholder wealth and not situations like this. So, we are looking, it is going to be a very long, drawn-out process, because we are fighting with private companies, and it is unfortunately not just the city who's able to do it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Anything else, Jim?
No, no. And I didn't mean to stop things, but I knew he had an answer, because we had talked before.
At this point, I'm going to ask if anyone else in the public wants to make a comment on a non-agenda item before we keep moving. Hearing none. We have a long agenda this evening, so we'll keep it all, we'll keep it going. Oh, I'm sorry.
She started to stand.
Oh, sure. Yeah, please approach the microphone. Tell us your name. Share with us.
My name is Carrie Draper, and I just have a complaint about the water in Phoenix Hills and that area that we get water from Brazil. It smells bad a lot of the time. I don't feel like it's safe to drink, so we buy water to use for drinking.
I live in Woodbridge. I'm actually the District 2 rep, and we've already begun conversations with the mayor about the situation with Silibil Water, and same situation. We're doing our best to work on it, because I hear you. We had the same exact issues in Woodbridge.
I'll be able to sign.
Thank you, Carrie. All right. So, closing public comment. We'll keep moving. And, Michelle, are there any corrections to the journal?
Mr. President, we did have a report from Jason Simler.
I'm sorry. Yes, we've got two reports. Yeah, welcome, Jason. You're next.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Jason Simler of Baker Tilly, serving as financial advisor for the Redevelopment Commission. I believe that Jordan sent you an email yesterday with some information that the Redevelopment Commission is required to file on Gateway, reporting 2023 information. We've done this for a number of years. It's been a requirement, but last year, it was also required that we present this information to the council. So, that's what Jordan sent that to you last night, and I can kind of go over this information briefly, if you'd like, or if you have no questions. I know you have a long agenda, but I'm happy to entertain the council's wishes.
Please go ahead and make the presentation, Jordan.
With the information that Jordan filed, again, this is all historical information, 2024 data. So, at the top of the schedule that you have, it just lists the number of allocation areas that the city has, their names, when they were created, and when they're anticipated to expire. It also lists the commission members, the Redevelopment Commission, that were a part of the board in 2024. We also list the amount of revenue and expenditures that were collected and expended out of each allocation area. So, we put together a little graph to show that for each of the five areas. And then, within that, we're also required to describe of those expenses what they are as far as their classification. As you will see in that, the majority of the expenses that were incurred in 2024 were for principal and interest on bonds that are outstanding, that have helped pay for the various public infrastructure projects and buildings that support the majority of those areas. Also, it has the account balances of December 31, 2024, for each of the areas, and also details of the bonds that are outstanding, how much was paid each year, when those bonds expire, and then how much principal and interest is remaining on those bonds. So, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions on any of those, if you'd like, or answer any other questions.
I reviewed it when I got it yesterday. I don't have it in front of me right now. Does anyone from the council want to ask any questions? Well, of Jason. I guess we're not doing public comment on this one. All right. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
We also have a presentation. Well, next order of business, Michelle.
The presentation from the Terre Haute Wabash Valley Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority.
Welcome, Mary.
Full screen.
Was it, it wasn't in presentation mode?
Thanks, Michelle. Appreciate it. Good evening, President, nation, city council members, the elected officials in the room. Michelle, thank you for helping us set this up this evening, and also all participants in the gallery this evening. I'm Dr. Mary Howard, president of the Terre Haute Wabash Valley Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is an international sorority founded January 13, 1913, and at Howard University by 22 collegiate women, who had a vision of creating an organization that was dedicated to public service and academic achievement. Our sorority has over 1,000, actually, 1,070 chapters, and over 350,000 members around the world. We are here this evening because we are launching our first, our inaugural Delta Day at the City Council. We're doing this because we want to celebrate you, to thank you for your hard work, your dedication to empowering our city, and listening to the constituents in your representative in your districts. We also are here because our organization is focused on public service in the community. We're comprised of college-educated African-American or Black women primarily, and we also are focused and dedicated towards service to the Black community, as well as the community overall, all citizens in our community. Our focus have, we have a five-point programmatic thrust, which is educational development, economic development, mental and physical health. We also have two additional five-point, items in our five-point thrust, international awareness and involvement, as well as political awareness and involvement, which is the reason why we're here tonight, for political awareness and involvement. Before we get to that, just want to quickly tell you a little bit about the Terre Haute Wabash Valley Alumni Chapter. We were found, well, we were chartered, actually. We were chartered last year. We're only coming up on our first-year anniversary, which will be April, actually, 28th, 2024, is when we were chartered. Already within our year, we have begun, or we've started, or we are about to start, a number of initiatives, as you can see. Delta Day at the City Council is one of our initiatives that we're starting, which will be an annual event, look for us every spring. We'll also, we also have a scholarship that we've just started, so that's an announcement to anyone who has, who knows of someone, a girl, who is graduating from high school here in the community, or actually, in our service areas, which covers the Wabash Valley, or a college student. We have a scholarship that's now on our website. We are also, we also have an academy, or we're getting ready to launch an academy for girls within the next year or so. We also have an annual backpack, back-to-school backpack giveaway, which was begun originally by Councilwoman Bowland, as well as Councilwoman Hinton. And the backpack, back-to-school backpack giveaway will be at the Lockport Community this year, August 9th, so please come and join us for that. Can food drives, a civic education program will be upcoming, and also, we have our inaugural pancake breakfast, which you all have been invited to. You've been given complimentary tickets by Councilwoman Hinton, who is also a member of our sorority. We are here tonight for political awareness and engagement, and we have, actually, this is, it's kind of layered. Actually, we have Delta Days at the City Council. This happens across the country with most of our chapters. Remember, we have about 1,000 chapters, so this happens all over the country. We also have Delta Day at the State Capitol. We were at the State Capitol, and you might have seen this in the paper last week. We were there with our representatives, Good and Path. And we also have Delta Days at the Nations Capitol. We were there three weeks ago on Capitol Hill. And we also have Delta Days at the United Nations. So, we are actively engaged, well, we're just actively engaged. I can say that we're pretty much politically aware from top to bottom. Not saying that you all are bottom. You all are top. Okay. So, there's some, there's some issues that we would like to share with you. SB 289, I've been watching it carefully today. Pretty much that bill has been gutted. Our biggest concern with SB 289 is that it's going to impact our K-12 schools, and we're very, very concerned that not only will it, of course, impact K-12, it will also impact higher education. And our biggest concern with higher ed is that without diversity, equity, inclusion, we have students and individuals on our college campuses who will begin to feel like they don't belong in the community. It will not only impact the colleges and universities within Terre Haute, but it'll also impact overall the citywide. So, we want to be aware of SB 289. Like I said, we've been watching it today. It did get pretty gutted, so we're a little, we're still very concerned about its impact on diversity, equity, and inclusion. The other initiative, of course, as mentioned earlier, is water in our community. We'd like to see good tap water in our community, and we hope that you have paid attention to, of course, our sorority sister, Carrie Draper, as well as the individual who came up earlier, Mr. Fowler. Thank you, Mr. Fowler, who came up earlier, talking about water in District 1. We would also like to have, to know a little bit more in the future, if you have this information, data from ARPA with regards to employment statistics and data. How has, how has ARPA impacted our community positively, hopefully? With all of the, with the monies that have been distributed to different organizations and agencies in our community, we just like to find, you know, we'd like to know the outcomes. It was a tremendous amount of money. Let's, let's hear a little bit about how it has improved our community. And last but not least, we would like to have, we'd like to have more bus shelters and sidewalks improved in our community. Over the winter, even in this rainy season, there are children I've seen at Lockport and at Greenwood Manor, and individuals trying to catch the bus, and they're sitting on benches that aren't covered. We, in the rainy, snowy season, we have the children standing on the corners, waiting for the buses with their parents, again, uncovered. We really would like to see monies being put into bus shelters and updated benches for members in our community. Again, we are inviting you to our pancake party, which will be April 26, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. at Longhorn Steakhouse. Everyone's invited. The tickets are on sale on our website. There's a QR code, if you'd like to scan it and purchase more tickets or donate. The money goes to, all proceeds go to our scholarship. And that is the end of my presentation. Thank you all for listening, and we'll take any questions if you have them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
And thanks for the refreshments out in the hallway. That was really nice. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I'd like to say something.
Yes. Councilperson Hinton.
Yes, thank you. To the women of Delta Sigma Theta, thank you so much for your engagement. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for sharing your resources with us tonight. Thank you for your voice. Thank you for your activism, and please continue to hold us accountable, as well as others. And so, thank you for the work that has already gone forth in our city, and we look forward to the work that you will continue to contribute as individuals and as a collective unit. So, thank you for coming.
All right. Thanks, Councilperson Hinton. Corrections to the journal, Michelle?
There are none.
Communication from the mayor. Welcome, Mayor.
Hey, good evening, Council President, nation, and members of the Terre Haute City Council. I'm going to do that real quick. Couple reminders. We've got the citywide cleanup this Saturday for locations, Sarah Scott, Woodrow Wilson, Vigo County Solid Waste Management, and City Hall. If you get any calls from city and county employees, yes, we were the ones who marked off the parking lot. It is for the cleanup. We apologize. But we're really looking forward to that, and this is a culmination of a 15-month effort at really trying to clean up Terre Haute. So, as you know, the Trash Task Force has continued. It will slow down a little bit, because grass season has started, and some of those employees also cut the code enforcement list of grass. I do really want to compliment a couple of individuals, because the cleanups are great, cleaning the alleys of trash are great, but enforcement in the judicial system, I do want to give them a ton of credit. This past Tuesday, we had city court, and to really simplify this, there's a case of papers here and four pages here. When we started, you know, we would see a lot, a very high percentage of individuals not choose to clean up their property, to mow the lawn, or to address that ordinance violation. But this past week, I think, is a great example. This large stack here was all the properties that have started to do something to clean up or address the concern that they were cited on, and then this smaller batch here was those who chose not to, and of course, we'll follow the judicial process for that. So, it's been a long 15 months trying to get some property owners to move, or alleys cleaned, and we definitely have a long way to go. But between the Department of Redevelopment and Engineering working on blight removal, wastewater director of public works, Jesse, code enforcement, the street department's Trash Task Force, and multiple city cleanup, city-county cleanups each year, I do think we've taken a positive step forward. On the note of demolition, our first quarter demolition was approved end of February. That was 27? That was 28 residential properties on that demo list, and then we've got another demo hearing coming up in June. Again, we went from two a year to about four a year. I just got a call today even about a property. I said, hey, my good sir, that one's already been approved. It just takes time to get the equipment there and take it down. We are on pace to hit this year's goal of 100 properties that are condemned, that the private market does not want to be removed. Next, I'll quickly just update you on our housing front. We continue to see a lot of infill housing projects. A great example is 13th and Locust, a neighborhood that most folks wouldn't assume investment is happening in, but they're in Phase 1 of their Athletic Village, which is an infill housing project. Of course, we continue to work on downtown. We got to go back and finish one little corner at the School Corporation Building, and then we're going down to hit the old police station. So, little bit of work left at the School Corporation Building, then we go downtown, and of course, we continue to finalize the details on that apartment complex. So, housing continues to be a top priority. Our building permit data for March was not as good as last year, but we didn't have as many storms as last year, so we're hoping that April and May's building permit numbers kind of match with that better weather. With that, pending any questions, I'll be done, and I'm sure I'll be back up here by the end of the evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Anybody have any questions for Mayor Sackman? Reports from city officials.
We have one.
Thank you, President, nation, members of the council. Good evening. I just have a couple of quick things for you. I know we have a long night. I've had a long week. It's going to be a long weekend, but it's going to be a good weekend. I do have some pretty exciting and pretty astonishing statistics here when it comes to our transit ridership. I know we've discussed it several I know we've discussed it several times in here. We pitched the idea of moving to a fair, free structure for transit. And I'm just here to present you some feedback from that. So we sort of have, quarter-one numbers are in. And we're very impressed, and we're just excited to see this continue. So January of 2024, the city, there was about 10,000 riders. 2025, that was increased to 15,000 riders, roughly a 53% increase. February of 2024, again, was about 10,000 riders. 2025, we almost hit 19,000 riders for the month of February. That was an increase of nearly 75%. It gets better. So March 2024, 11,300 riders roughly. 2025, we were over 21,000 riders. That was an increase of about 86%. So kind of first quarter, year-to-year, we increased by over 23,000 riders, or about a 71% increase in our ridership. Obviously, with additional riders is going to come additional challenges. And I just, I have to applaud our, especially our bus drivers, for taking this challenge on. Honestly, we have not received too much, you know, we've received zero pushback from our bus riders. They've been on board for this. We know it's a challenge for them. I would encourage you to encourage them in any capacity that you can going forward. We've really asked them to do a lot more, and these numbers sort of say it all. They're doing a lot more. So yes, bus shelters, things like that will have to be something we look at in the future because we believe these numbers will continue, right, at this pace. Maybe not the increase, but we're going to continue to see large ridership numbers. And I do have to say thank you to A.T. Ryan for getting these numbers for me and just being such a great partner in this project from the time we first sort of discussed it to the time that it launched. She's been my number one to go to, to discuss plans, and she'll be my number one going forward. So a couple of events happening this weekend. The mayor mentioned one of them, the citywide cleanup. I won't go over all those details again, just to tell you that it's from 8:00 to noon. So please share, participate if you can. We, I know that we've been moving a lot of large items and debris out through the Trash Task Force, but know that when that trash is taken back to the street department, it is placed inside of a dumpster. So we will be able to report some overall sort of comprehensive numbers to you towards the end of the year. The other event this Saturday, at 9:00, we have consultants that'll be set up at the public library. So there's also a Cracker Barrel session that day. So we kind of piggybacked on that session. We heard it was pretty well attended, but the reason we'll have some consultants there is that we are developing a safety action plan. We received some Safe Streets for All funds to develop the safety action plan. And obviously, a well-developed, holistic, and thorough safety action plan is really a key element when the city goes to apply for some implementation funding. So please join those consultants and staff at the public library starting at 9:00 a.m. They'll be there for about an hour after the Cracker Barrel session ends. More details, the survey's already online. If you'll check the city's social media, you can find links to both the survey to fill out, plus there's like an interactive mapping that we really want to kind of get some data points on there early so that when others go to it, it's kind of a little bit more intuitive to them on how to use the map. So just one more thing, and this one is directed at Councilman DeBon. If you've been hiding or haven't been down south in the evening, the lightsabers are back up by I-70 and glowing again.
Oh.
Yes, yes. So just a little bit of a side note. And then I did want to mention one more thing. Yesterday, I went and received a grant on behalf of really the Parks Department for, it was a $10,000 grant from the Wild Bush Valley Community Foundation. This grant will be used to put two new fountains in around, on the Heritage Trail at around 25th and Locust. The other one will be on the trail there at Memorial Stadium. So I really wanted to mention this because we've had three outstanding interns over the last year. Austin, Victoria, Mayor, who is her? Olivia was the other one. They all three worked hard on this project. They did 99% of the work. I think maybe all we did was sign some things. But yes, so kudos to them and the work that they've done in securing that grant. So that's all I've got. Thank you all for your continued support in what we're trying to do here with the city. With that, I would be glad to try to answer any questions for you.
Good work.
Anybody have any questions for Jesse?
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do, Ben.
Welcome.
All right, Michelle. Reports from the Board of Public Works and Safety.
I receive none.
Reports from standing committees?
There are none.
Non-standing committees?
There are none.
And items previously tabled?
Special Ordinance 5, 2025, resuming a property located at 500 502 and 504 Barton. Area planning gave a favorable recommendation, and you have a proposed amendment before you.
Welcome, Richard.
Hey, good evening. Does your packets have the plan, the parking plan? It was presented last night, area plan. I didn't know if it made it your way. Then can I pass out a present to all of you as a little souvenir for tonight's adventure?
Thank you. Thank you.
It's a good read.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of the council.
My name is Richard Scheck. I'm with the law firm, Wright, Chegg, and Lowry. And tonight, I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, RMS Rentals LLC. They're the owners of the property located 500 502 and 504 Barton Avenue here in Terre Haute. The property that we're asking to be rezoned is currently zoned for an R2 plan development. It was R2 plan development because it was previously used for a daycare facility. Tonight, I'm here asking it to be rezoned to a C1 plan development for the use of a daycare nursery. So this similar use, same use, a little more kids because this is going to be a daycare center, which, as you are aware, because I know you're working on the code as far as daycares go, I think you can all agree there are some issues within our code on daycare and how they're treated, which create a problem or issues for us going forward on this, on what zoning classification works for what we're attempting to do. With that, I want to thank the area plan office for their assistance in going down this path. And I really want to thank Marcus and his team. Not only were they helpful in the determination of the zoning classification, but then, as we've all heard, because I've been up here before in front of you on daycares, one of the concerns that neighbors have is the traffic. And that was obviously a concern of not only the area plan office, but of Marcus and his staff. So Marcus was kind enough to meet with us and assist us with what you have in front of you, which is not only a plan for the parking for the staff, but the parking, not parking, but the pickup and drop-off of the children at the daycare. This daycare is going to be, at first, I thought it was the first of its kind in our community. It turns out Veronica Castle's daycare, which is the name of the daycare, they currently operate one on 19th Street. And what makes this daycare unique is, although I'm out of the daycare business as far as needing daycare, I'm not aware of, so I'm not nearly as involved in the daycare business, but they provide 24-hour care. And in our community, I'm not aware of any other daycare that provides daycare for the night shift, for the overnight care. They currently do that at the 19th Street location, which is directly across from St. Patrick's School. In talking to the director of the daycare, they have not had any complaints concerning their current operation, and it does operate 24/7. They average about 12 kids during the nighttime and a few more during the day. Because with the size of the facilities, they are permitted up to 27, 27 children. But as I state, they're currently operating at nighttime. They average about 12 children at night. The, and as, so we landed on the C1 plan development, which, as you know, you have to meet a hardship. And we believe, which is always kind of an interesting situation, all plan developments. And this one, we're laying towards the improvements of the land hardship in that it's set up currently as a daycare, which creates a hardship for any other type of use. But the true hardship in this situation, in my opinion at least, is that our code hasn't stayed up with the times and doesn't meet the needs that we have in our community now as far as daycares. And we really believe that's the hardship. And once you, obviously, then you meet the hardship need, then you have to look at it as in the public interest. Well, I believe that quality daycare is an important aspect of being a community. And I feel confident that you feel the same. I've sat in this meeting where you've given out, I believe it was a million dollars to Brandon Hallick and Casey's for a daycare, which made me think that you, as a council, care about and understand the needs for important daycare. I'm here tonight not asking for a million dollars, although I haven't asked my client. I'm pretty sure she'd take it if you're offering it. But, so I'll leave that on the table. But we're here simply tonight just to allow them to operate a daycare at this location, to operate something that's already been happening, but just by a new owner. And the beauty, too, about the C1 plan development, why we didn't want to do a C1, is this is in a residential area. It's three lots on the corner of, on Barton Avenue. So we understand that if this no longer is a daycare, the idea of it being a commercial and a residential is not a good idea. And that's the beauty about the plan development. So in the event that this is no longer a daycare, it'll revert back to the R2, what it was before, which is protecting the residents in that area. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address Special Ordinance Number Hearing none, council?
Mr. President.
Counselman Dinkle.
Richard, so is this currently operating as a home or a daycare, or is it vacant right now?
It's vacant. It changed ownership hands.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
And I will add that area plan staff gave it a favorable recommendation. Area plan commission gave a favorable recommendation. There were no, there was no one there in opposition last night. My office hasn't received any communications, and I'm not aware of any communications from anybody opposing this resanding.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Hinton.
Can you just say, is it 24-hour or just first and second shift?
24-hour.
Okay, so with the, just curious, there is no plan for drop-off, pickup for?
Well, they've got, they've got set times, but I think in the event that there is a need in a different shift, they would make that accommodation. But as you see by the plan, they have kind of a set, what they're kind of doing now as far as what, as I said, they're averaging about 12 a night, and they're, folks, they're kind of based that upon that scenario.
I was just saying, there's no pickup time for the morning session. There's a drop-off.
Yeah.
Is there going to be a?
Well, the other thing about today's world is everybody doesn't go to work 8:00 and get up at 5:00. We're in a world where people are going to work at all different times in the day. So to have a set, you know, we're going to do this time and this time, it's really unrealistic in the current clientele because we are in a changing world of people working at all different times and places.
Thank, I understand that, I was just, since they had it here.
Yeah.
Since they had a ballpark figure, you know, finish the, finish the loop.
Yeah, well, and you'll notice in the pickup, one of the things that they do to keep the pickup going is the parents or the guardians will not be getting out of the cars. They will, the staff will be taking the child out to the car or getting the car, the child from the car and taking it in. That speeds up the drop-off and delivery and keeps the heavier times going more smoothly. I think they've kind of perfected it on the 19th Street because they're in the middle of the block on 19th Street. And I drop a child off St. Pat's every morning, and it's kind of like Bristol Motor Speedway in the pits in the mornings. I mean, it's crazy, but it works for St. Pat's, and they've been a good neighbor. And like I said, I'm not sure, they're not aware of any complaints they've had with regard to how they operate on that location. They're just looking for a bigger, better location in the same vicinity, and they found it fortunately in this situation.
Thank you. I yield.
Anybody else?
Just one question.
Yeah.
I might be missing it. How much staff do they have, do you know?
So they'll have, it's all guidelines on how many they have to have, and it just depends on how the schedule is set, on how many they'll have at that time.
Okay.
So it could be up to 11 if they're running full, or it could be as, it just depends on how many kids.
Okay, just, thank you. I yield.
Counselman DeBon.
You did say the one at St. Pat's is 24 hours as well.
Yeah.
Okay. And I might have been a little confused. Is this one, is this, that one moving to this location?
Yes.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you know how long the one near St. Pat's has been active?
I want to say, she told me eight years-ish.
Okay, has it always been at 24 hours?
I don't know how long it's been 24, but it's been there for, I want to say eight years, but please don't hold me to that.
Okay, all right. I yield. Thank you.
Counselperson Bond.
So Richard, on the signage and markings, I think the parking is probably the biggest concern for, for most of us and for the neighborhood. Signage and markings, it says clearly marked signs will indicate the designated drop-off pickup zone. And then pavement markings and cones will be used to guide traffic flow and prevent confusion. So that's all going to be taken care of by the staff that's managing the drop-off pickup locations.
Yeah, the beauty about the location of this is it's on the corner, and they have three homes, so they have a pretty good stretch in front of the homes on Barton. So it's their intention to bring them in the same direction and drop off in the same place, and then they can go, whether turn right or left, or go straight at that intersection. And that, we believe, is also the least intrusive to the neighborhood. With a good plan and good implementation, we don't anticipate causing too much distress to the neighbors. Is there going to be crazy days? Or my, I mean, I'm not going to stand here and say there's never going to be a problem.
Sure.
There's always, you know, there's problems sprinting to St. Pat's, there's problems every school. I've ever dropped off, gone down Ohio Street, and they get backed up on Ohio, dropping off at Wilson. It's crazy things happen.
I understand. We've all tried to get down 19th Street when St. Pat's was either starting their day or ending their day.
What's really fun is when a bus goes through there.
I understand. All right. All right, thank you. The staff will be managing that signage and cones and all that stuff. All right. I yield.
Anybody else?
Richard, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I'm looking at the amended ordinance, Special Ordinance 5 is amended. And at the bottom of, I guess it's the first page of it, there's an A and a B.
We've all tried to get down 19th Street when St. Pat's was either starting their day or ending their day.
What's really fun is when a bus goes through there.
I understand, all right. All right, thank you. The staff will be managing that signage and cones and all that stuff. All right. I yield.
Anybody else? Richard, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I'm looking at the amended ordinance, special ordinance 5 is amended, and at the bottom of, I guess it's the first page of it, there's an A and a B. Says that the real estate described shall be a planned development in a C-1 planned development, et cetera. And then A says, "The real estate shall be used for a daycare center or for any use permitted in a C-1 planned development." What other uses might those be?
They're intending to use it for a daycare. That's kind of a standard language in the plan development, but their intended use is for a daycare.
I understand the intended use that you're explaining, but I don't understand the, what appears to be extra language that says for any use permitted in a C-1 planned development. I thought that the point of a planned development was to specifically designate a use, in this case, a daycare.
President nation, I would agree with you 100% that probably that extra language should be stricken from the planned development ordinance. Just so it just clearly states a daycare, and if it's not daycare, then it reverts back to the.
Can we strike or for any use permitted in a C-1 planned development?
Absolutely.
Michelle, how do we do that?
I'll need a motion to amend it.
Mr. President.
Counselman Dinkle.
I move that we amend special ordinance number 5, 2025 by striking.
I'm sorry, I'm just, you need to amend it as presented and then amend the amendment.
We have to amend the amendment.
Because the amendment.
Okay, so.
Amend the amendment.
Mr. President, I move that we amend special ordinance 5, 2025 as presented.
Do we need to say exactly what the amendment is?
You're not amending that.
I amend the amendment.
Okay, yeah, sorry, now I'm tracking. Okay, it's been moved by Counselman Dinkle and seconded by Counselperson Boland that we amend special ordinance number 5, 2025 as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's amended.
Mr. President.
Counselman Dinkle.
I move that we amend special ordinance 5, 2025 by striking or for any use permitted in a C-1 planned development from subsection A of page 1.
I second.
It's been moved by Counselman Dinkle, seconded by Counselperson Boland that we amend special ordinance number 5, 2025 as amended, as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so it passes. That amendment passes. One more question, Richard. Section B of that same area, of that same page, says, "In the event that this planned development has not materialized within six months, it's understood that the planned development becomes void and the real estate shall revert back to R2 planned development."
Right, that's what, that's, so when the R2, in theory, when that daycare no longer operated, it should have reverted back to R2. But it hasn't. So currently, it is, it is, the zoning classification is R2 planned development. That's why it would go back to what it was previously, which is the R2 planned development. Then at that point, you would, and I'm not familiar with the mechanism that, once it no longer, then it reverts back. I've not dealt with that, so I don't know if that's an operation of the engineer's office, if that's an operation of the area plan office, because it, because I've not dealt with one that has reverted back. But the way it is now, the zoning classification is R2 planned development, so that's what it would revert back to.
And as I understand it, it's an R2 planned development because that was the zoning classification that it needed to be for its previous use as a smaller daycare.
Correct.
Could we not just strike the words "planned development" and say that it reverts back to an R2?
Mr. President, you could do whatever you would like. I just don't know, again, the mechanics of how it operates, when it reverts back.
It's layer upon layer, so you are taking it to a C-1 planned development from an R2 planned development, but the R2 planned development is void because the company, the business ceased to exist for six months.
Yeah.
But you've been working with engineering for how long to get this rezoning? So you can't take it back to an R2 planned development because the R2 planned development's voided.
I just don't know if it's been voided, though.
Well, the council hasn't rescinded it, nor has engineering, but how long have you been working with engineering to rezonate?
Oh, yeah, this has been going on for a few months.
Right.
And I don't know how long it closed before the new owner took possession.
It's been a while.
Yeah, because, yeah.
So you could, you could take it back to an R2, but I don't know if there's any hiccups because you're supposed to take it back to the previous zoning classification. And the immediate zoning classification prior to this was R2 planned development.
And Mr. President nation, I just don't know, when that previous daycare stopped, I don't know the mechanics of when it triggers, whoever turns it back. I don't know how that works.
I don't think there is one.
Maybe another code revision when the time comes.
I'll admit to not being an expert on this stuff, but in my mind, it's six months. And six months has passed, so it's reverted to an R2, and that's why you're here.
Well.
I mean, it's not that simple, but.
It is that simple, except I just don't know, it was an R2 planned development, just like, okay, so you approved this tonight, they run a daycare for a month, realize it doesn't work, and they close, it sits empty for a year. That would, it would revert back to the, I just don't know, does the engineer's office correct, does the area plan office change the classification? I just don't know how that works. I just know right now, if you ask area plan.
Well, all I'm suggesting.
They told me it was R2 planned development, that's why we put R2 planned.
I understand, you're just going on the best advice of the people who you're talking with about this. And I'm not trying to be a fly in the ointment, I'm confident that you're going to get this done for your client. But I am seeing a role of the council who ultimately makes decisions on what zoning classifications are one way or another, to just say, look, if this doesn't materialize or stops for six months, then the property reverts to R2, and that solves that question. Is that too simplistic? Marcus is shaking his head, no, I don't know if that means it's too simplistic, yes or no.
I would say not if you agree. We could take it back to an R2 in this situation. Okay, we can take it back to an R2, let's amend it again.
Somebody else can amend.
Would, okay, again, I'm not trying, I know that everybody's loathe to amend legislation on the floor, and I apologize for not communicating with Richard on the front end about these concerns. But given that we're where we're at, do I hear a motion?
Mr. President.
Counselman Dinkle.
I move that we amend, again, special ordinance 5, 2025, striking planned development from subsection B on page 2.
Second. We'll get this right.
It's been moved by Counselman Dinkle, seconded by Counselperson Boland, that we amend special ordinance number 5, 25, as amended, as amended, as presented.
That's amendable to me.
Thank you. I think that's amenable. Anyway. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Okay, so now we've amended the amended version and then amended it again. Does anybody, yeah, no more amendments. Does anybody else have any questions? I realize that was me who was making all this last trouble. Okay.
Mr. President.
Counselman Dinkle.
There be no further discussion, I move that we approve special ordinance 5, 2025 as amended.
And I will second that.
As amended, as amended.
Okay, so it's been, it's been moved by Counselman Dinkle and seconded by Counselperson Boland that we approve special ordinance number 5, 2025, as amended, as amended, as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Richard.
Thank you very much.
Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Mr. President, you have a statement to read.
I do. The next body of work that we will be moving through involves a resolu, involves three resolutions, a general ordinance, and an appropriation. So we will be grouping those together so that they all happen, and because of that, I'll be changing the order of some of our business. First, I'd like to move resolutions 5, 6, and 7, 2025, to this point in the agenda. So, gentlemen, welcome.
I have to read, don't rush. Resolution 5, 2025, approving an amendment to the declaratory resolution for the 2022 consolidated economic development area and declaring an area as the economic development area.
Hi, Council President nation, fellow members of the council, I'm Jordan Marvel, the Director of the Department of Redevelopment. I'm accompanied here by Dustin Meeks with Barnes &amp; Thornburg. I don't want to muck any of this up too much for you, so I'm going to let Dustin steer the ship, but I do want to say I genuinely appreciate everybody making time out, or taking time out of their days to.
Say a special thank you to both Michelle and Jessica, who were very helpful in making sure that all the stuff got on the agenda in the order it was supposed to be and in the right format. So what we have for you tonight, spread across the three resolutions, a general ordinance and an appropriation, is the approval of a new allocation area to collect tax increment revenues in the city, and then merging that new allocation area into the city's existing 2020 consolidated economic development area, which is really a step for administrative convenience. And then an approval of a lease between the Terre Haute Redevelopment Commission and the Terre Haute Redevelopment Authority, which is a financing tool that we're going to use to issue redevelopment authority bonds. Those bonds will be paid using TIF revenues from the new allocation area, and the reason for the lease structure is it allows us to do what's called a property tax backup, which provides the benefit of a lower interest rate because of the credit that we're going to be able to offer to the bond market. The bond proceeds are going to be used to finance an extension of New Margaret Avenue, as well as some repaving work on Hunt and College here in the city. And the final approval is an approval of the sale of the assets that will be the leased assets under our lease incident to the financing, and then an appropriation of the bond proceeds for the use in the project. So as, we'll go through kind of all five of those. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the materials or to walk through it in greater detail if that's preferred, so. But I know we have a lot, you have a lot on your plate tonight, so I didn't want to belabor any points.
So right now, we're talking about resolution number 5, 2025.
Yes, I should, I should narrow to that one, shouldn't I? So resolution 5 specifically sets up the new Margaret Economic Development Area and Allocation Area. This is setting up the new allocation area from which we're going to draw tax increment revenues that are going to be used to finance the project. So this is creating that new TIF allocation area. And this has been approved by the Redevelopment Commission and approved by the Vigo County Area Plan Commission. So it comes to you, and then next stop will be a public hearing before the Redevelopment Commission about the creation of the area.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public who would like to ask a question about resolution 5, Personally, I was afforded the opportunity to talk to you, and I appreciate your asking my, answering my many questions about it there. I'm sure that the public, after the last piece of business, appreciates that too, that it happened privately and not with everybody having to try to follow. So hearing, unless any of my fellow council members have questions about this, do I have a motion on resolution 5, 2025?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 5, 2025. Second.
Counselperson Boland has moved that we approve resolution 5. Counselman Chalos seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so resolution 5, 2025 has passed. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Resolution 6, 2025, approving an amendment to the declaratory resolution Economic Development Plan for the 2020 Consolidated Economic Area into the declaratory resolution Economic Development Plan for the New Margaret Economic Development Area.
You're right.
So this is the resolution that is going to merge the new allocation area that the council has just approved into the 2020 Consolidated Economic Development Area. And really, we, the reason to do this is so that when Jason runs his report and he comes to talk to you in 2025, he has an easier and simpler report than having to report to economic development areas. Another benefit of having the allocation area in the larger economic development area is that you can use the revenues in or serving the economic development area. So it allows these, the revenues from this allocation area, insofar as there are revenues after the financing, to be used for a wider range of purposes to serve the city.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question or make a comment about resolution 6, 2025?
Mr. President.
Counselperson Lautermer.
If there are no questions, I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution 6, 2025 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselperson Lautermer, seconded by Counselperson Chalos, that we approve resolution 6, 2025 as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution 6 has passed. Thank you, everyone. Next.
Resolution 7, 2025, approving a lease between the City of Terre Haute Redevelopment Authority and the City of Terre Haute Redevelopment Commission.
You're right.
Yeah, so resolution 7 provides for the council's approval of the issuance of bonds and bond anticipation notes by the Terre Haute Redevelopment Authority and the approval of a lease agreement between the Redevelopment Authority and the Redevelopment Commission. The Redevelopment Authority is a special purpose body created under state law that is, it exists just for the purpose of doing lease rental revenue bond financings with the Redevelopment Commission to finance local public improvements. So the basic structure is that the Redevelopment Commission enters into a lease with the Redevelopment Authority, and the Redevelopment Authority will issue bonds that are payable out of the lease rentals paid by the Redevelopment Commission. The reason that we do this structure is it allows the city to put a property tax backup on the financing to get a better interest rate from the bond market without implicating the debt limit that the Redevelopment Commission has, so you preserve your constitutional debt limit for a financing where property taxes might actually be used to pay for something.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question about resolution 7, Counselperson Thompson.
I just want to thank both of you for inviting me to the office to sit down and go over all this last week. It's a very nuanced situation, and you just did a very good job of explaining it, and I appreciate you taking the time and effort.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Counselperson Boland.
Again, I also appreciate the artwork because that helped me understand it.
Oh, the flowchart, yeah.
Yeah, the artwork. The question I had that I asked the other day, and I should have texted the mayor, called the mayor and asked him, the redevelopment authority, is that already appointed, or will that be appointed if there is a need?
So there are, I guess, I can answer for Brandon if that's okay. There, I think there are two appointments of the three, and we're working on the third. The redevelopment authority is going to have its meeting, hopefully in the near future.
So we're going to create that board, committee, commission, whatever you want to call them, and then we'll only bring them into play if necessary.
So it actually, it already exists, it just has sort of sat dormant for a long time. It's created under statute by ordinance, so you guys have, we have an ordinance, it exists, we just had to appoint new people because it's been sitting on the shelf. I always like to joke that the redevelopment authority is the Redevelopment Commission's little buddy, and every so often, we need some help, and so we bring our little buddy out to be our helper.
That was the one thing I asked and then didn't follow up on, I just really wasn't clear on that.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you very much, I yield. I yield.
Councilman Dinkle.
Following up on that, who's the appointed authority of that? Is it the mayor? Is it the Redevelopment Commission?
So, the, the mayor appoints all three members of the Redevelopment Authority.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. President?
Councilperson Hinton.
I missed the meeting. I missed that meeting y'all had with.
We met with them.
I'm curious, huh?
We met with them.
Oh, we did? Yeah, I remember. In my office.
Yeah.
But I, I missed the color code because you didn't have the, the transcript.
I can say, I think maybe I made the chart after, after our meeting.
I was gonna say, I didn't get the chart.
Jordan, Jordan heard how I was trying to explain it. We decided we needed a chart.
Okay. My only question is, I'm curious about the, the College Avenue, Hunt Avenue, exactly.
Oh, in, in, in the, in the project description?
Yes.
Jordan, can you more fully describe the Hunt and College Avenue? I guess maybe actually this is the Brandon question. Call in on our third.
Good evening, Council President Nation and members of the Terre Haute City Council. So, to really specify on that project description, what we have is, we have a parcel, the parcel being casino, with an approximate $4.3 million per year coming in for taxes. The project before you, instead of just New Margaret and utilities, so New Margaret and utilities would make all the greenfields around the casino more marketable and lead to economic development. We have two other opportunities. Those two other opportunities, the first is to pave Hunt Road, not all of it, just really the portion within city limits. The reason why we're looping that into this is if the city were to pay for that just through community crossings, I think Brad Utes would have a few more gray hairs and frustrations because I'd take away his entire road paving budget just to do Hunt Road. That's kind of the level of project that we're looking at, based off the fact that we know we're gonna get 4.3 a year, and the way we can structure this bond, we can still pay it off early and add that portion of it to the project. When it comes to the extension of College and Forty-Six, this is not going to be a city-only project. So, the airport and the city have explored extending College, moving east on Forty-Six, and doing similar utilities, as you will see, on New Margaret. The reason being is we continue to work with a number of companies that are exploring relocating to areas in and around the airport. And also, as you look at especially a lot of those greenfields around the airport for companies, without utilities, it would stop that economic development. Unfortunately, the way the state used to, up until this year, handle some of these large development projects is there used to be like an IEDC slush fund. And if your project was large enough, the state would call and say, hey, look, here's X amount, five, 10, you name it, to put in the utilities and the street and the road work. That is gone. So, unfortunately, we're rolling, doing our best to roll the beginning of that project with the rest coming from the airport, and Hunt Road, and New Margaret into one. To close out, the reason why Hunt Road needs repaved, Milestone has recently moved their plan. So, we will work with Milestone on that specific price and project, exploring what's called a build, operate, transfer, construction plan. But when you look at the size and weight of the vehicles that will be on Hunt Road, and you look at the current condition of Hunt Road, I, I can't leave that a lot of those residents, a lot of the folks who work at the airport, with that road in its current condition, what's gonna happen to it? I mean, it's, it's only gonna get exponentially worse due to the weight of those vehicles. So, this frees up our community crossing grant dollars for other projects, specifically in the city's urban area, which we're starting road paving on this year's community crossings projects, May 1st. It also allows us to begin the partnership with the airport and bring utilities and finish New Margaret. And to close it all out, we need New Margaret finished because the water mains that are, we're supposed to go in on Margaret would require us to close that four-way intersection. You can't close Margaret and Fruit Ridge right now unless you have another alternate route with the amount of traffic on it. So, all these have compounded. We were able to package it together in kind of one bill, for lack of a better term, and one project, based off of the casino's property tax value. That it, and David, help me out here. That is not all the casino taxes, right? Remember, there's gaming revenue, the property tax. Okay, yeah, I wanted to make sure we added that in the paper, so folks don't think we just took all the casino money there. This is about the property tax coming from that casino. Does that help?
Yes.
I don't have charts. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor.
Drawings?
All right, so, thank you. Does anyone else have a question for our team here who's presenting this on redevelopment's behalf? Do I have a motion on?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Seven, 2025, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Lautermer and seconded by Councilman Dinkle that we approve Resolution Number Seven, 2025, as presented. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution Seven passes. Okay, gentlemen, next, I would like to, in service of grouping all of these together, move General Ordinance One, 2025, to this point in the agenda. And-
General Ordinance One, 2025, admitting City Code, Chapter Two, Article Nine, Section Two-Dash-One-Thirty, creating New Margaret Avenue Non-Reverting Fund. You must vote to take action.
Thank you, Michelle. You're on again.
So, now that, now that we're through approving the Redevelopment Commission and Redevelopment Authority to enter into their lease, the Redevelopment Authority needs, needs something to lease to the Redevelopment Commission. So, in the structure, what they do is they're gonna, once they issue their bonds, they're going to purchase some roads in the city to use as their leased assets that they're gonna lease to the Redevelopment Commission, and all of this is exactly how the statute envisions you doing it. So, the city is going to get the bond proceeds, and those bond proceeds need to go into a fund so that they can then be appropriated to the completion of the project that the mayor has described. So, what General Ordinance One approves is the sale of those leased assets to the Redevelopment Authority so that they can lease them, and then putting the money from their issuance of bonds later this year into the non-reverting fund for use on the project.
Thank you for that explanation. Are there any members of the public who have questions about that or wanna ask for more detail on General Ordinance Number One, 2025? I understand. Hearing none? Anyone from the council?
Mr. President?
Councilperson Hinton.
I move to take action on General Ordinance Number One, 2025.
It's been moved by Councilperson Hinton, seconded by Councilman Chalos, that we take action on General Ordinance Number One, 2025. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we can take action.
Mr. President?
Councilperson Hinton.
I move that we adopt General Ordinance Number One, 2025.
I second that.
It's been moved by Councilperson Hinton and seconded by Councilman Chalos that we adopt General Ordinance Number One, 2025. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Last one. Well, at this point, in service of dealing with all five pieces of this in order, I would like to move appropriation for 2025 to this point on the agenda. Michelle?
Appropriation for 2025, $22 million from New Margaret Non-Reverting Number Zero Four Nine Nine to services contractual, New Margaret Non-Reverting Zero Four Nine Nine Zero 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 Three, Four Three Two Zero, One Zero, for $22 million. You must vote to take action.
You're on.
So, this is the appropriation from the non-reverting fund to the, the contract fund so that the project can be undertaken after, after the bonds are issued, and the appropriation is in the amount of the maximum amount that's authorized for the bonds. It, in all likelihood, will be, will be smaller than that, but we're, you're authorized, you're basically, you're appropriating up to that, that full amount. I did have one question for Michelle. Do we, did we do the, the notice for the public hearing at this meeting, or are we gonna do that next month?
The public hearing on-
The additional appropriation.
Oh, no, that's tonight.
Oh, that's, okay, great. Sorry. That was, I just, I just, I'm sorry.
Run and done.
My, my first time. Sorry. Sorry, Michelle.
No, we, I-
She's been so helpful to me. Poor Michelle has to deal with me all the time, and I just want you to know she's a saint.
We all know that. We're very aware, and we love Michelle and are very appreciative of all she does for us.
Just for clarification, to make sure we're on the same page, it was advertised, and President Nation held the public hearing by asking for public comment, or you will in a moment, and so they'll vote to take action on the first meeting, and if it's unanimous and we receive six yes, it will be fast.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, so, step five of five. Is there anyone from the public who would like to ask a question about appropriation number four, 2025? So, hearing none. That's the public hearing. Counsel?
Mr. President?
Councilperson Lautermer.
If there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion that we vote to take action on appropriation for 2025. Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Lautermer, seconded by Councilperson Bolland, that we take action on appropriation for 2025. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We can take action.
Mr. President?
Councilperson Lautermer.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve appropriation number four, 2025. Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Lautermer, seconded by Councilperson Bolland, that we approve appropriation number four, 2025. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well done, guys.
Thank you so much, counsel. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for getting us through that.
You're stalling us on the last one. Okay. Do we need to take a break?
Okay.
Okay.
If I go a little longer, though.
Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Special Ordinance Twelve, 2025, rezoning a property located at Ten Eleven Maple Avenue. Area planning gave it favorable with one opposed recommendation. You must vote to take action on Special Twelve, Thirteen, and Fourteen.
Welcome back, Richard.
It's nice to be back, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Richard Shaglin with the law firm, Right Shaglin Lowery, and I'm here on behalf of the dailies with regards to the rezoning of this property on Maple Avenue. We would like to withdraw that with your permission.
Do I have a motion?
Move to withdraw.
Second.
Take action for-
Take action, yes.
Second.
So, it's been moved by Councilman Chalos, seconded by Councilperson Hinton, Bolland, that we-
Take action.
-take action on Special Ordinance Number Twelve, 2025. Thank you for your help, everybody. All those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we can take action.
Mr. President?
Councilman Chalos.
I move to withdraw Special Ordinance Twelve, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Chalos, seconded by Councilperson Bolland, that we withdraw Special Ordinance Number Twelve, 2025. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so, it is withdrawn. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you very much.
Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Special Ordinance Thirteen, 2025, rezoning a property located at Twenty-Three Ten and Twenty-Three Fourteen Locust Avenue. No recommendation was issued by area planning. You still must vote to take action.
You're on, Richard.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of the council. My name is Richard Shaglin with the law firm, Right Shaglin Lowery, and tonight, I'm here on behalf of petitioner, Chairess Adi, with regard to the property located Twenty-Three Ten and Twenty-Three Fourteen Locust Street. This property is currently zoned, one lot's zoned R1, and one lot is zoned C2. The C2 lot is a vacant lot to the west of the R1 lot. The R1 lot has a commercial building on it. It used to be the home to the Painter's Apprenticeship Fund. Fun little story about that. Prior to the petitioner making improvements that they have to not only the building but the ground, they had a meeting at some point, and there was a bullet hole in the ceiling. And every time I went to a meeting there, I thought, I hope I'm never at a meeting where a gun's pulled and shots fired through the roof. Anyway, that luckily has been fixed. The petitioner has been already making improvements to the property because if you've driven down that location, improvements need to be made to that property. The, the petitioner here this evening is a relative who will become the owner of this property, who is the, Supreme of Santaford, who is the owner of the three daycares to the north of this property. This is a, this, as I said, this property's currently zoned R1 and C2. They're asking to be rezoned C6 for a used car lot. They currently operate Expo Autos on Walbach Avenue. They'd like to open up a second location, and they'd like to do that at this location. As, if you've driven the area, there is residential properties along Locust Avenue, but if you've driven and paid attention, starting at Twenty-Fifth and going down Twenty-Fifth, the first block and a half is commercial, and then across the street from this location, almost the entire block is occupied by a church. And then, the, the lot west of the C2 lot is a house with a pretty big vacant lot in between it. And then, catty corner of that is another commercial property. My point being, there is a lot of mixed use down Locust Avenue. The, my, my, the petitioner and the future owner have been investing in this area, would like to continue to invest in this area. They feel like they've been a good landowner in this area and would just like to continue to use the property and for, for this particular property for a used car lot. I would be happy to answer any questions that we have.
Thank you, Richard. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to Special Ordinance Number Thirteen, 2025? Counsel?
Mr. President?
Councilperson Thompson.
Thank you. I was at the area planning meeting last night. I have to say, for the most part, typically, these things pass unanimously. I was the lone no vote on the previous request that was withdrawn. I was also a no on this. The vote came down to seven that voted to give positive recommendation. The rest of us voted no. It required eight to pass a positive recommendation, and area planning decided to submit no recommendation. But based upon what I've seen in the area, I do not believe a car lot conforms to the nature of that neighborhood, especially knowing that there are three daycares located right nearby there. So, you know, I, I think it's important for us to maintain the characters of our neighborhoods, and a car lot has no place next to residences, so I'm gonna be a no.
Thank you, Councilperson Thompson. Anyone else? Did I, did I already ask for public comment?
You did ask for public comment.
I see that you have a crutch. Can-
He's gonna use it on us.
Can I bring the microphone to you? I'm sorry, I didn't see you earlier.
And that's the reason that crutches are involved. My name is Vera. Good evening, President Nation and all of the city councilmembers. My name is Vera Kyle, and you've seen me before for why I make waves and why I'm YWCA, YMCA. But I just had a question. It's just a real simple question. It's an agreement with the councilmember. That area, a car lot, I don't think that that makes any sense. I mean, maybe you have some other information that would make that sound okay, but it doesn't sound okay to put a car lot there. It doesn't meet with the, the auspices of the neighborhood, and I'm just wondering where their head was. Was it because they were in that business? And I don't understand, and that's my question.
So, as I, I was, I was, as I, as I stated, Locust Avenue from Twenty-Fifth to however far west you wanna go is mixed use throughout that whole area. There is commercial throughout. From Twenty-Fifth to Third Street, there is, there isn't, I don't think there's a block that is all residential. But what we have is, we have a block that we're talking about tonight that is basically owned by the same person and has shown to be a good home, a good property owner and takes care of their property. And, and I would, I drove the area today, as I, as I do prior to all meetings, and it'd be- be, be spectacular if there was more Sabrina Sanford's along Locust Street. There needs, there is a lot of need for improvement along Locust, and it starts with Sandy, or with Sabrina Sanford. They have invested in this area, they want to continue to invest in this area, and, and tonight they're asking you for permission to have a, a second car lot location, um, at this spot. As I, as I stated earlier, this is a C2. They could put anything in a C2 or C1 today without asking permission, but tonight they're asking for a used car lot, which is, as far as a commercial entry into a quasi-residential area, you can't ask for a better, um, commercial use because you have, uh, low traffic, no nighttime activity, no, no Sunday activity, so it's not gonna have any adverse effect on the church across the street because they, they're not open on Sundays. It's, it's, as far as being next to a daycare, there's already a, a solid fence between the two properties, and with it being owned by the same people, I don't anticipate any problems between the daycare and the, the, um, the car lot.
Counselman Azar.
I'm gonna go back to a staff review, uh, back 2005 with this property. We're just gonna read it. The vacant western parcel is currently zoned C2. It was rezoned in 2005 by, some of us were on the council then, for a proposed use of an apprenticeship school. However, staff was unfavorable to any other use for the location in 2005, stating that the favorable recommendation was limited to an apprenticeship school meeting hall for the painters' union. Otherwise, staff is unfavorable to this request. The Department of Engineering offered an unfavorable recommendation with the following explanation: The intended use for an auto sales would alter the neighborhood's characteristic and could create significant problems for the surrounding area. There is a childcare directly next door to the east, a church across the street to the south, and homes to the north and west. Recommendation: Staff provides an unfavorable recommendation in addition to the unfavorable recommendation from the Department of Engineering. So basically, we're bringing back almost the same, the request for an auto sales. So, you know, in 2005, I believe that when we did, uh, approve the apprenticeship school, it was with the, uh, intent that this would not be, be rezoned as an auto sales later. I yield.
Thank you, George. Is, uh, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this on the council? Counselperson Lattimer.
Mr. President. Richard, I mean, I understand what you're saying, that we've got some commercial area through there. I, I totally understand that, but we're also investing a lot of money in the park on down the street. We have a school down the street, maybe it's a block over and a couple, few blocks down. And to me, when I still drive through there, there's, I mean, I'm not saying that we don't need to invest in that area, but there still are a lot of residences through there and the churches. So, you know, I, I caught this when, when, uh, councilman Azar read this and, and I read that part. And so, I mean, I understand there's some commercial area through there, but I also understand that still, I mean, we need to start thinking about our neighborhoods. If, if we are bringing in, we're wanting to bring businesses in, and we're wanting to attract people, we really need to start, um, really watching where we're zoning, and we're not just throwing some spot zonings in to different areas. And, and that's just my opinion. Mr. President, I yield.
Thank you, counselperson Lattimer. Anybody else?
I'm just trying to clarify something here. We have two different parcels that we're talking about, correct?
Correct.
Ones are one currently.
That has a commercial building on it.
C2, Community Commerce.
Yeah.
So regardless of what we do, if we don't improve this tonight, one parcel, and I'm not clear on which one that is, Richard.
The, the R1 is, has the painter's old building on it. The building they've been remodeling and cleaning up. And then the C2 is the lot to the west.
Okay. How that goes down.
However, with C2, I'm not, I don't know that.
I think, yeah, C2, Community Commerce District. So they can still do whatever they want.
All kinds of stuff in there, yeah.
All right, I yield, thank you.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, make sure I heard you clearly. The owner of the daycare, which makes up a good portion of the area, if I'm not...
It's almost the whole block, yeah.
It's almost the whole block.
They, they own probably 60%. When you throw in this piece, it's like 80%. And, and the reason, since it's already transferred, I will say, the owner of the painter's building, uh, so, and I, like I said at the beginning, I attended a lot of meetings with painters, and that fence wasn't always there. And the daycare always used the parking lot for the payment office. Well, they got along with the painters, so it wasn't a problem. Well, when it changed hands, the previous owner didn't like the daycare, and that's why you had the fence.
Okay.
And the previous owner wouldn't sell to the daycare, but didn't realize the person they sold to was a very close relative of the daycare owner. So, uh, you know, as far as the daycare being next to a, a car lot, um, with it being the same owner, they obviously have a, uh, interest in making sure that there's no problem.
Sure.
And they've been operating three daycares there for a long time. I'm not aware of, and they're not aware of any complaints of the daycares that they've been running. So they would, like, like I said, they've been investing in this area, and they want to continue to invest in this area, and to, for them to continue to invest in this area, the used car lot is the, the mechanism they feels good for them to make money, so they continue to invest.
And was there anybody, um, from the, the area who was opposed to this last night?
Nobody, nobody came to me last night. I, I was not aware of any communications there, plan office, or to my office, with the current opposition. As, as counselperson Thompson stated, um, it went through first as a, uh, they voted for a favorable recommendation. It was close. I thought I heard eight, two. Maybe I didn't hear it right. They called for a roll call. A newer counsel, a newer person on the commission flipped, and it went seven, three. Then it, they voted unanimously, just to give it no recommendation to get here this evening. Um, and I understand, uh, the, the engineer's report. You know, we go back 20 years to when that was rezoned for the apprenticeship school. A lot has happened in 20 years. And you could go into many parts of our community and, and go by what they thought the path is gonna be 20 years ago compared it is today. But fortunately, for, for this part of Locust Street, there are property owners who care and want to invest and continue to invest, and they're here tonight asking for your help to do that.
Thank you, I yield.
Counselperson Thompson.
I would just like to clarify, I think there actually were four names, and one of them was our city engineer, Marcus Maurer, and I greatly value his opinion and input, so I just want to make sure the city council is aware of his vote.
Thank you, counselperson. And I, Richard, not to be argumentative, but counselman Azar, uh, read staff findings. The first paragraph he read was quoted from 2020, from 2005, 20 years ago, but the second paragraph was today, which reads again, "The Department of Engineering offered an unfavorable recommendation with the following explanation." And that's for today, this proposed use. "The intended use for the auto sales would alter the neighborhood's characteristic and could create significant problems for the surrounding area. There's a childcare facility directly to the, next door to the east, a church across the street to the south, and homes to the north and west." You know, recently, in recent years, we haven't, I haven't really heard much talk about spot zoning in the council. And there's probably a reason for that, but when I look at the surrounding uses here and see R1, 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 uh, first, that might not be, well, I guess it is exactly right because it's surrounding uses to this commercially zoned lot next to an R1 lot. Is that a fair characterization?
Yeah, because the painter's old building, R1, and then the lot next to it is a C2.
Parking lot.
But no, it's, it's grass. It's never really been parked, but...
Did it have a popcorn stand on it a long time ago?
Uh, I would have to go back.
I thought about the stand, too, wasn't there one time, in the popcorn stand?
Right, yeah, yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, so, uh, so, thank you for the lively discussion, everyone. Does, uh, do I have a motion on special ordinance number 13, 2025?
Can I take one second?
Yeah, please.
I, I asked Michelle to, uh, quickly, because she can access things much quicker than I can look on my laptop to look at what the C2 uses are, if anybody wants to look at that. I'm not sure that they can't go ahead with the car lot on the parcel that's already zoned C2.
It's too small.
Too small?
It's just a little...
Yeah, I don't, so I'm good at that.
C2 allows that, you say?
Well, it, it, there's a lot, it just...
C2 and anything in a C1.
But that's kind of got the trees and stuff.
You can do all kinds of stuff because you get C1 and C2.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I mean, if anybody wants to look at this, they can look at it.
So, are you saying that you've got a list of all of the potential...
Potential uses for C2 zoning. I, that's all I, my, I just wanted some clarification on that, but...
Yeah. And it's long. Flora shops and feed stores and gift shops and haberdasheries. Might need to be updated.
There's also some in C1 that probably need to be updated. But, but you get all the things in C1.
I understand.
Okay, so say the size of the lot for a C2?
I'm sorry, what?
Does it say the size of the lot for a C2, though? Because this lot isn't very...
I don't think it's about size.
I don't think so either.
Uh, the main thing on C2 is, um, you have a, a maximum building size.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, anything allowed in a C1 and is allowed in a C2.
Yeah.
And I'm looking at the city engineer, there may, may need to be a buffer zone with the C2, but you can get a variance on that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle, for getting that for me.
Yeah, thank you. Do you yield?
I yield, sorry.
Oh, okay. Did you want to speak about haberdasheries?
No, I just, so I'm, I'm a little confused, then. If a C2 can allow an automobile sales, then what are we doing here? Why are we even having this discussion?
The lot next to it.
You're doing the one, the R1.
Yeah. Because they want to use the existing building for the office, which is an R1.
Okay, and the C2 would be too small for an auto...
What's that? It probably should have never been an R1, but... Yeah, I mean...
A lot of shit.
It was probably a house years ago.
I yield, I'm sorry.
Could be.
It's a commercial building, yeah, right now.
Okay. Do I have...
It's a commercial building at this point, correct?
Yeah, it's a commercial, yeah. Jimmy.
Which may or may not...
It used to be the old, uh, union.
It was a painter's training club.
With a bullet hole in the ceiling.
Yeah.
Which could have, which probably came from above, actually, during a period of celebration, you know, like, uh, New Year's Eve or, uh...
You haven't been to a lot of union meetings.
And no, I haven't. But I have fixed roots for bullet holes.
Mr. President.
Counselman Azar.
I move we take action on special ordinance 14, 2025.
All right, there's a...
13.
Oh, I'm sorry, 13, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved that we take action on special ordinance number 13. Counselman Azar made the motion, counselman Chalos seconded it. All in favor of taking action on special ordinance number 13, 2025, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, uh, we can take action.
Mr. President.
Counselman DeBol.
I move that we approve special ordinance 13, 2025.
Am I supposed to ask, like, three times for a second? Um, okay, so, if there is no second, it dies for lack of a second. Uh, so, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Special ordinance number 13, 2025, dies for lack of a second. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you very much.
Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Special ordinance 14, 2025, admitting special ordinance 19, 2024, as amended engineering department and engineering non-reverting salaries. You must vote to take action.
Welcome, Marcus.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Marcus Meyer, city engineer. So we are, uh, looking to do two things here tonight. One, you had an ordinance in front of you previously regarding construction inspectors. There was a lot of numbers and a lot of shifting there, and I believe some numbers got transposed, uh, so this will look to repair that. The main difference being that construction inspector three there was showing us 43,000, that should have been 54,000, oh, nine, two. And that would correct that, uh, that mistake that was made. We're looking to grow our inspection team some and bring in some inspector ones. We're, we're currently interviewing for that and hoping to do that to keep up with the construction that's taking place. These, uh, these positions are funded by the non-reverting fund, which in this case is funded by the inspection fees that we charge so that we can provide a, a service to the city that is cheaper than, than what's out there, and we can have our own people on that. So when we're working in your neighborhood or anyone's neighborhood, they'll, they'll be a city member there with that job. The, the part of their job is to keep the contractor on, is to track the job, to manage the job from that side, but another big part of their job is, is to be there for the public so when the public has a concern in their neighborhood and they see a person from the city of Terre Haute, that is their connection to that job and know what's going on or have their concerns met. The second part of this, we've been looking for an engineer for, for quite some time. We're a little bit picky. Um, we want someone that's really qualified, but we also want somebody who deeply cares about our community because it's, it's, uh, tough to, to find that, and we also need someone that's willing to work for, uh, city government pay with a engineering license. We did find someone, and we're excited to bring him on board, Caleb Williams, who's, who's been here before. He spent two years here, took a two-year hiatus, and he, we're, we're happy to welcome him back, and he's ready to hit the, the ground with his feet running, and we're gonna skip out on the whole year to two years of training and bring him on board. We couldn't, however, find a way to fit him in our current budget, so we're asking to raise that salary line. Given it's this late in the year, we do have the funds sitting there because we had enough budget for the entire year at the lower line, so we're looking to bring that up for this year. In the future, we're in talks about, I know we have some scares coming potentially with some of the house bills with the general fund, and that is some concern. We're looking at options to get some of this into non-reverting so that we can maintain where we are with the general fund and, and meet some of those goals. Happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to ask a question about special ordinance number 14, 2025? Counsel? Marcus, just for clarification, you're moving money within engineering non-reverting. This is money that's collected for building permits and things like that, right?
Yeah.
You're, this is, so you're doing this within your own budget, funded by fees?
Yes, so one of them, let me get to the page there. So, one of them is non-reverting, the, the top one, the inspector is non-reverting, and yes, that's gonna be money that's collected based on inspection of projects, building permits, building inspections. We're, we're trying to give that to, to more of a business-like approach so that the folks that are paying for that service are the ones using it, and the general taxpayer that's not using that service isn't being taxed for it. The engineering position this year is in, in the general fund side, and we're exploring options to move that to the, the non-reverting side in the future.
And do you think, given the, the changes that we made to the permitting fees and all that, and the revenue that you're seeing, that it's reasonable to expect that that engineering Level 2, Caleb's job, uh, would be moving into non-reverting next year with the next budget?
That's tentative, we're looking at, yes.
Okay. Thanks for, uh, clarifying that for me. Does anybody else have any questions?
Mr. President.
Counselman Dinko.
There's no further discussion. I move that we take action on special ordinance 14, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by counselman Dinko, seconded by counselperson Hinton, that we take action on special ordinance number... on special ordinance number fourteen, twenty twenty five. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We can take action.
Mr. President.
Councilman Dinkle.
I move that we approve special ordinance fourteen, twenty twenty five.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Dinkle, seconded by Councilperson Hinton, that we approve special ordinance number fourteen, twenty twenty five. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you.
All right. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Resolution nine, twenty twenty five, approving the use of public-private agreements for Indiana Code five dash twenty-three.
Good evening again, Marcus Meyer, City Engineer. So, this is probably a little complicated to look at, so I'll try to simplify it for you. And I'll thank the mayor and redevelopment for kind of teeing it up a little bit earlier. So, what we're looking to do here is pass this ordinance, which would enable us to use alternative delivery procedures. Our typical delivery procedure for a contractor right now on a construction job is what we call design, bid, build, where we hire a consultant or design it ourselves, bid it, and award to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, and that winning bidder would build it. Given some challenges we have today in the construction side, a good example is utilities, some of the jobs we're on have two-hundred-and-seventy-day utility relocation timelines. It's a changing world. There are unique projects that do need alternative delivery methods. So, the delivery method we're looking at here specifically is called a B O T, a build-operate-transfer. And in this case, it would allow us to select a contractor-engineer team based on qualifications, negotiate a price in a project with them, and allow them to work together from the get-go, which has a lot of positives. There are some things that can be worked on while the project's under design. We can get a set maximum price, and it really can get that project moving faster. And, you know, there's a lot of times that the contractor knows a way to do something that can save time or money, and/or money, and really creates some good examples. The mayor had mentioned that, you know, one possibility that we looked at doing this with is that Hunt Road project, so that's another example where we have an asphalt plant that's there right now, that's looking to do that, and we have a lot of partners involved in that project between the airport redevelopment, engineering, and the asphalt plant. And we're looking a way to bring that project quickly and involve all the partners, and passing this will allow us to do something like that. And if Mike has anything to add, I'm happy to ask you any questions.
Thank you, Marcus. Michael Wright, City Attorney. The only thing I would add briefly is that all of the processes are outlined in the statute, same as the process that we already have in place for bid procedures. So, it is a statutorily created process at the legislative level, and, you know, it's developing more in the state as the issues that Marcus described become more prevalent in communities throughout Indiana. I would only then echo that this body, the council, is the statutorily created entity that oversees the award of an agreement that would be worked out through an RFP process, which is what the statute dictates. So, I'm happy to answer any questions about the underlying process.
So, just to complete that, what I think I hear you saying is we are creating this means, and then if there is a project, it would come back before the council as part of awarding a bid after a RFP, RFQ process is played out.
That's exactly right.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question about resolution number nine, twenty twenty five? Hearing none, counsel? Councilperson Bullard.
Is this a relatively new statute? Or has it been available, we just haven't utilized?
It's not, I mean, new in the last fifteen years, Councilwoman Bullard. So, yeah, I mean, there's been build-operate-transfer projects done in bigger communities, primarily centered around criminal justice and larger infrastructure projects. But it's not super antiquated either. It's fair.
And maybe you, maybe you already answered this, but you said the statute's lined out, just like the statute is lined out.
Yes.
What we're currently doing, but are they, and they're similar?
They're, they're not similar because they're different processes, but they're similar in the sense that there are checks on transparency, there's checks on multiple levels of review, like in this process that we're describing, that is before you, you know, a formal advertised RFP goes out, and then the, you know, unit that is looking for a good deal gets an opportunity to meet with each prospective proposer, with each respective entity that's providing a proposal, give them opportunities to sharpen their pencils, try and find effective cost savings. Once that reaches a final form in terms of a potential agreement, it comes back before you for final ratification and approval.
And responsible ordinance is a part of both of those? Maybe not.
No, no, no. Yeah, so this is not a public work project as is defined in the responsible bidder ordinance. This is a.
Private.
Yes, it is a public-private partnership where there's more risk on the private side of the equation. And potentially, if they live up to certain standards set forth in the agreement, there's potentially more reward there. So, it's a, it is a kind of putting them, requiring some skin in the game, so to speak.
I yield, thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Dinkle.
Just to go a little deeper, and I just want to make sure I understand this. So, the Board of Public Works would not have any skin in the game on this?
No.
Okay. So, essentially, rather than asking for bids, you say, this is what we want to accomplish, and contractors, project manager, whatever, can come to us and say, we'd like to sit down. We then select this company to do it before we've, we're not receiving bids necessarily, we're saying, we want this company. Within that project agreement, then it can say, this project shall not exceed X dollars.
That's right.
That agreement then comes back to this council for approval.
Yep.
Okay. And then so all of that negotiating would be done by the administration, engineering, what have you?
I mean, yes, Brandon, Jesse, Marcus would be involved.
Sure.
Me to an extent. But it would be about the deliverables on the project, timing, cost, Brad would play a big part, I mean.
Right.
The, you know, right now in a design bid-build, all those change orders, those things that weren't anticipated, that can cause significant cost overruns, you know, barring some contractual issue with the contractor, you know, the government's on the hook for those, and that's just part of the project, and it comes along with it. The thought process.
This could be more favorable.
That's right, yeah, I mean, so you're potentially paying maybe a little more, but it's a guaranteed price, and that number can come down if they don't deliver, like, on a timing schedule, certain.
Well, and that agreement can be drafted, however.
That's right.
We feel that's beneficial. Question for Marcus. If we approve this, how often do you think we would be using this? I know it's hard to say, probably.
We would certainly want to pilot it first before we went bigger. I personally love the design bid-build process. It's what we've done, it's what our contractors are used to, it's about as transparent as it gets, and I like that. There are unique scenarios, though, that do warrant others, and it would be a case by case basis.
So, we're not going to put the Board of Public Works out of business, right?
No, I don't think so. And there's some things with this project, you know, particularly, there's a utility crossing on it that's, that's pretty difficult. And that's one of the, you know, not just timing, but there's a, there's some other complications with this, that being able to get a lot of things moving at once.
You can engage with the contractor much earlier and have them involved.
Yeah, and if there's some difficult permitting or difficult utility crossings in this case, parts of the project can be underway. And those parts of the projects can be done, benefit a portion of the community while we're still waiting on this part. So, currently with design bid-build, I'd mentioned those utility delays, if we're doing a big project and there's a lot of utilities to move, they do have to move if they're in a right-of-way and don't have an easement at their cost, so it's not an additional fee to the city, but we do have to provide accommodations. So, if we were, you know, Brown Avenue is a good example, we were hoping to get that project out, and there were some major utility relocations, and we had to let a contractor trim trees to provide them a place to go, or we may have to, on some other projects, demolish buildings or other structures before we can even get that to go. And with a tool like this, we could start that project and start that process, and now we can have the contractor work with the utilities to make that work instead of getting it out of the way before we even get started, because that two-hundred-and-seventy-day delay number is becoming more and more common. And that's really tough on a project, when we budget by calendar year for a project, and we get a surprise like that, we're back here asking the following year for the money to do a project that, oh, by the way, the price has gone up because inflation. So, that's a good tool, and it's also, I'll note something we learned fairly recently in a debrief for a federal funding application we'd made. They pointed out that they would like to have seen different types of creative delivery in one of those, so maybe there's a chance that this could also help in a project like that, too.
Thank you, I yield.
Does anybody else have any questions for Marcus or Michael? Resolution nine, twenty twenty five.
Mr. President, I move that we approve resolution nine, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Councilman Azar has moved that we approve resolution nine, twenty twenty five. Councilperson Lattimer has seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you, John. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Resolution ten, twenty twenty five, adopting the Riverfront Development Master Plan.
Welcome, Lori.
Thank you, Lori Danielson, Riverfront Development Director, happy to be with you. And as Michelle is pulling up that presentation, my hope tonight is to give you the guts of the mass strategic long-term master plan to further develop our riverfront. This is a collaborative effort that's been going on for about eighteen to twenty-four months in collaboration with the county and the city and riverscape, and Thrive West Central has been our project management company. Back in twenty twenty-three, we hired landscape architect Stantec, as well as bringing the Army Corps of Engineers to the table in their very generous two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of in-kind work that they did to help build this plan. And to get started, Marcus is still here, he and Matri, I just want to acknowledge them right out of the gate. They've just been phenomenal with your history. That was even one of your Rose projects, I think, when he was a student at Rose, looking to further develop our riverfront. So, they've just been really great to work with. We've had a team of eighteen to twenty people that have been meeting on a monthly basis to get us where we are today. So, I'll show you the guts of the plan, highlights, and then would ask for you, your continued support, and thank you for the support to this point, which has been tremendous. So, why are we doing Riverfront Development? Look at, a look across the state at successful projects to drive economic development, growth, increase tax base, quality of life, tourism, public access, when we look at not just Indiana, but around Midwest, Fort Wayne, Columbus, Mishawaka, Evansville. When we catalyst or use catalyst projects to activate our riverfront, we can be rewarded as they have been with private dollars coming in to further invest in our riverfront. The plan is about five hundred pages, so again, I'm not with what you've gone through tonight and been able to successfully move forward, I'm going to give you the highlights. And we'll be doing a community kickoff on April twenty-third, we'll share this with our community, and then we'll have that available for people to dive in and really see the details. This is a long-term plan, ten to fifteen years' time horizon, but it's this incredible, incredible vision for what our riverfront could look like. So, our timeline, as I mentioned, we started back in August twenty twenty-three, we started with engagement activities in November of twenty-three, again in January, and then sort of the funnel of doing the work, throwing a lot from our community, our existing plans, like the Fairbanks Park Plan and the Y renovation plan and the Turn to the River Plan and some of our street plans, allowing our landscape architect to synthesize all of that, get to know us, and then come out with some recommendations here at the end of twenty twenty-four, and I'll share some of those with you today. The vision we have for our plan and the goals were helped, they were informed by the help of our community, but if you look at the last line of that vision, why can't we have the most vibrant, prosperous riverfront community in the state of Indiana? We may be a bit behind other communities, but we can learn some lessons from the work that they've done. So, that's our, that's our vision. Goal one, we're going to drive economic growth and prosperity. Goal two, we want to sustain our riverfront, so for generations to come. And then goal three, we want to provide convenient and safe access for people visiting our community and people living in our community. So, those were the three goals that helped inform the work as we went through the process. So, again, sort of a funnel, a lot of discovery, we analyze, build ideas, bounce those off our community through community engagement, refine that, and then have some recommendations, high level, again, to guide us. This is our community plan. It's been informed by the community, for our community, and it will evolve over time with us. Study area is about seven thousand acres. You can see from the north part of Terre Haute all the way down to under the I seventy. And for economic value and where we could build and activate the riverfront, we really dove in deep and detailed on the River East portion of that study area. It's about a two-and-a-half-mile riverfront area and about sixteen hundred acres. So, that's really where we spent a lot of our time getting into the detail. Engagement, somewhere over sixteen hundred people joined us in offering their thoughts on what they'd like to see, had a number of stakeholder meetings, informational sessions, and you can see there the key takeaways. A lot of enthusiasm for this work. I think if I heard it once, I heard it a dozen times. You've asked us a dozen times what we want for our community and the riverfront, let's go do it. So, a lot of enthusiasm for this work. A lot of enthusiasm and support for government and leadership to help get this work done. We do need to find ways to resource the work ahead of us, and there are ways to do that, and we'll tackle that. Top priorities, improve parks and open spaces, continue that great work that we've been doing. People want to be around the river, they want to activate the river with activities. They also want to live around the river and work around the river. And we need to find ways, and the plan acknowledges, finding easier and more convenient access to the river, so that cars and bikes and pedestrians reside safely on that path to enjoy the river. We took about seventy different property sites in that two-and-a-half-mile length of the key study area, put them through a sort of a point-in-time scoring mechanism that linked to our three-goal area, so you can see those in front of you. We'll continue to use those as we move forward, because those are ever-evolving. But that gave us some target opportunity sites that then our architects could really build out more detailed plans for us to think about and really envision what we have today and what it could become down the road. As a sort of branding and placemaking strategy, what came out of our study are seven districts. So, based on what exists there today in those zones and what could exist in the future, we came up with the Gateway District that you can see between Cherry and Ohio, we're sitting here in the Civic District, then south of that, we go to the Innovation or Aerospace District, then where we have the Community District, that's currently where ISU University Apartments are, obviously, we have our Park District for Fairbanks Park, and we go drop down to the River District and then eventually the Entertainment District. So that just gives a little bit of identity for us to think about what exists today and what it could grow into down the road. There's over 120 recommendations, suggestions for us to think about. Those fall in the categories of branding, creating identity for the space, implementation schedule with some accountability on what do we do zero to two years, two to five years, and five years forward, infrastructure recommendations, housing and retail, as well as parks, trails, and open spaces, and really recommending things that are connecting to plans that we already had in place. And then some funding recommendations as well. They gave us over 40 different funding sources, whether it's state, private, local, or federal sources. Again, a point in time, but it gives us a look at evaluating some potential funding sources that we could bring to the table. So just a little look, again, don't want to take all your time, but give you a sense of some of those recommendations. This plan works to bring people and provide access to get people to the river. So over time, you can see this diagram really, again, as property values change or evolve. Print out, oh, there we go.
We'll be sharp.
Okay.
We'll be you, too. You're special.
Oh, there we go, too. Just looking at streets and how those might evolve over time as properties transition to something different than what they are today. And you can see even that first recommendation there. Why not call First Street Riverside Drive and help brand that? So a recommendation that we could start working toward now, but a good idea to let people know that we've got businesses and eventually people living on Riverside Drive. Some of the buildings and housing, won't go through all of those, but again, recommendations for us to think about. So as we build forward, it's connected and it supports the planned vision. What do we have there? We have infrastructure. Not going to bring up any zone changes today based on what we've touched on, but that's probably something we'll have to look at, right, Marcus? A lot of changes as we, again, evolve this space into something grander than what it is today. A lot of recommendations to continue to expand our parks and our trail access. All of this detailed review and analysis led us to three focused areas that then the architects built out a vision of what those could be down the road. So we have Gateway District, and we have the Community District, and then we have the River District as three areas that I'll give you a little look at the guidance and the vision for those. So you'll see it's not a clean sheet of paper, but in transition, what it might look like to have some additional housing, potentially hotel rooms. You can see Turn to the River continuing to be placed in this space, reaching out to the river. Maybe a food hall, food hall or a public space. We've got the old, old jail, 1908, could become a speakeasy. Maybe a climbing gym or something that's an anchor to bring some of the Indiana State University students down to this space. And then a lot more added green space and trails that would actually go over Ohio and could be a really cool entrance and gateway into our community. These are just some concept images. Our community was able to vote with stickers on which images and building structures did they most prefer. So this gives us a look at what the highest priority or desired amenities look like. Then we go down to the Community District focus area, and that would envision, again, over time, additional mixed use as well as open space, recreation, wellness. And that's where you start to see, again, potentially over time, opening up some of those streets so that we have visibility and more convenient access to the riverfront. Some more concept images there that bubbled up from our community interactions and engagement. And then we have our River District focus area, which that's about 71 acres. It includes the Wabash Environmental Technology Old Land along with Soil Max to the north of that. This property is currently in transition, which is very exciting to have potential opportunities to build some mixed use, expand and clean up that space for extended trails. And why not a pedestrian bridge that takes people and bikers and walkers from the east side of the river over to the west side of the river to that beautiful asset we have, that's Wabashiki Wetlands. Couple other concept images. Again, suggested that we have a lot of funding sources. Some we have tried to tap into in the past, whether it's parks or roadways. One of the benefits of this plan, I believe, will be that it's a vision for so much more. So it can help lift up applications for grants when we're looking at Fairbanks Park down the road. We can show that we have a grander vision and plan for any dollars that might be invested there as well. So current steps, we're building implementation team. This isn't going to sit on the shelf. I'm going to be working that with a lot of team members. They're going to help govern the process. We have a lot of work ahead of us and an operating team. We're working to continue to have open dialogue and discussions. And I've sat down with property owners in Gateway and with Indiana State University to share this vision so that we can understand what other visions might be for their property and keep those conversations open. Looking tonight for your adoption of a resolution to use this as a guiding document going forward. That helps us in the application process for grants down the road as well as having conversations with private developers. And we were able to also get the same resolution passed at County Council on Tuesday. Other work we're doing, but very important, we're going to share this more broadly with our community on April 23rd. We would love to see you all there at Holman Center Atrium. So we'll have some celebration because, as I said, this really is a community plan developed by our community and for our community. We want to get the work done, too, so we can all enjoy it. And I would be happy to answer any questions. I'm going to try to go through that quickly, but if I've missed something you need more information about, please, please do ask.
Thank you, Lori. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to Resolution ten, 2025? Welcome, Sarah.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Dillon. I'm a resident of Terre Haute. I live in the Park Place subdivision. I'm a very environmentally sound person, and I am against this. I think I sent you an email, but I'll give you some of the red flags on this proposal. So one of the company, for one, one of the companies involved is out of Canada, not even state-owned. And it's better known for running Keystone and Keystone XL pipelines. We won't get into that situation. We, I see this as a greenwashing proposal. There is a bunch of facilities that are going to be lost due to this, like family housing, the Campus Express that may be connected, that connects to its family housing, Dracer Square. Whether or not they're moving the YMCA to where family housing was. Ark of Terre Haute, Allen Chapel, a bunch of residents close to the mill, which is not on the plan that they posted on the website, of course. Third one, cost of some of the projects that are involved, like the pedestrian bridge, the Gateway District, what if it gets flooded? It's going to be costly to do those type of things. Let me see, what else? It doesn't tell all, the plans that they've posted already only tells about the Gateway District, the Community District, the River District. There is some good things, but there is, we don't know anything else, especially in regards. One example is the Aerospace District. Are they going to set up a data, if they're setting up data centers? Or there's already divestment issues regarding GE Aerospace. And then how much financing, if it's going to impact other areas in our community, especially like the school corporation, or any, if they're, one of the proposals that they posted was setting up a TIF district. Whether or not they're going to take money, that is not going to come from the state and, and trying to cut off all those resources. Those are some of the proposals I recommend you know about. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your input, Sarah. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to Resolution ten, 2025? Welcome, Marcus.
Good evening, Marcus Meyer, City Engineer. I would just like to add that we really appreciate the work the Lori's done on this and it's been, and all of those that have been involved. It's been a really fun time working on it, and I really look forward to helping make this a reality. It's going to be some exciting times ahead, I hope.
Thanks, Marcus. Mayor, did you want to chime in?
Yes, Councilman Nation, members of the Terre Haute City Council. I just really echo Marcus's comments. So this plan is, one, it's been fun to be a part of, but two, it actually sets a groundwork and begins to set the conditions to turn into, in Evansville, Fort Wayne, or some of the many other cities mentioned. It's definitely helped with development conversations as it pertains to around the river. I do think, I strongly believe that this plan was part of the reasons why we received the Lilly Foundation grant, which is funding an $11.6 million YMCA renovation in Fairbanks Park. I can't thank Lori enough for doing all this. She is the one who's like hyper-focused on this each day with the city staff and how much that we monitor and we look at. It's been nice to have someone who can solely focus on the river and engage in some of those discussions. So with that, I ask for your support on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this? Welcome.
Hi, Richard Simon. I always thought that the city need a touristy attraction, and this is absolutely a brilliant idea. And I think you'll get a lot of people coming to Terre Haute to enjoy the scenery, the river entertainment, and what have you. And I think this will develop Terre Haute even further.
Thank you, Richard. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close public comment now. Thank you, Lori. Members of the City Council, does anyone have a question for Lori or statements to make? Councilman DeBonne.
Just a quick statement. You know, there aren't really a lot of communities that have the potential to prosper by utilizing riverfronts. We're very fortunate that we do. And I know a lot of people have been working very hard for a long time to better our riverfront. This vision is wonderful, and I support it fully. I think if Terre Haute, if our community is really going to hit that next level, this has to be done and it has to work. And I'm very optimistic that it will. And I look forward to in 15 years, looking in and seeing what's been accomplished. So thank you for your work on this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Curtis. Anyone else? Councilman Dinkle.
Go ahead.
Kind of echoing Councilman DeBonne's comments. I just returned from a trip and in two chances, stayed in hotels that were on riverfronts in communities. And we walked along the riverfronts there and just enjoyed two communities' rivers. And it was very inspiring to look at that community and dream that that could be Terre Haute. I think the river presents an incredible opportunity for us. It's been a untapped resource for years. Those of us that have grown up here, of course, have a fondness for the river. But to see this plan finally come to fruition, I was involved in the early focus groups, and that was exciting, talking about all of the possibilities. So I just want to echo my support for this.
Thank you.
Councilperson Boyd.
Congratulations on your new position.
Thank you.
Second, I personally know people that Lori has spoken to with regards to property and how they can, you know, the personal conversations you've had with, about property acquisition. It's been very thoughtful, very productive. I don't think there's been any pressure on anybody to participate in this. The same as some of the other folks who have spoken, had an opportunity to visit the riverfront in the Fort Worth area and was talking to someone who had moved to the Fort Worth area 25 years ago, a local person. And she was excited to take us down and show us the riverfront. And she said, you know, when I moved here, this looked just like Toad Hop. And we all know what Toad Hop is. So I really, really, really am honored to be able to introduce this resolution for you tonight. Thank you for your work. Aye y'all.
Great, thank you.
Councilperson Heather.
As someone who grew up in a river city, some call it a town, they call it a city, of Evansville, and I watched the riverfront develop over time. Growing up, all we did was ride our bikes down, dress Memorial and up the hill, if you're familiar with going in that area. And so I've watched it develop. It's a business area, then it's a fun area, and trails and parks and that sort of thing. So when I moved to Terre Haute, I knew that there was a river here. The first thing I did was to go find the river. And I found the river, but that was, it was just it. And at that time, I was like, wow, why don't they do something with this? And it's nice to see that our city is now moving in the direction of Owensboro, Kentucky, and some of the other cities that you mentioned, and that we can now, to them, and we'll be the premier city with all the interests and ideas that are going forth. So I fully support it. Sarah, we hear your concerns. Thank you for sharing your concerns. And I'm sure that the developers will take care of the environment to make sure that it's environmentally safe and that the flood levels and we have proper levees, that nothing will be endangered. I know that Allen Chapel will be restored and taken care of. It's historic. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm honored to represent the fourth district, which includes most of the riverfront as it passes through Terre Haute, at least the historic parts, Fairbanks Park, the whole eastern area that was the primary focus of this plan. I've paid attention, I've participated, I fully support it. Thank you all for coming and doing what you're doing to make this a reality. Entertained a motion at this point, if there's no further discussion.
That's my nation.
Councilperson Bullard.
If there's no further discussion, I move that we approve Resolution ten, 2025. Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Bullard, seconded by Councilperson Lautermilke, that we approve Resolution ten, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you, Lori. Next order of business, please, Michelle.
Resolution eleven, 2025, transfer of $500,000 in the casino fund budget.
You're on, Mayor.
Council President Nation, members of the Terre Haute City Council. I did catch a typo on the first form. It states, Michelle transferring from pool project to purchase of equipment. The other two forms are correct. They say services contractual. Can I amend that form or do I need to bring this back?
We can amend that.
Bottom line is, we are transferring $500,000 from the pool line to services contractual to execute what few homes ended up opting in and are eligible for the Terrytown Project. I'm sure you've seen the water line go in. Over 20 foundations have been poured, so a lot of good housing is happening in the area. And then in ARPA, the Terrytown Project has all rolled into the pool project to keep those numbers the same. This is more of an administrative resolution today, and with that amendment, I'd ask for your support today.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm coming.
Yeah, just to drill a little deeper there, Michelle, what do we need to do?
Sure count numbers are correct. It's just a description. I think it's a scripter's error. It's just a scripter's error, basically.
Okay, I see it. Are you going to?
We don't, do we even need to amend it or? Mr. President.
Councilman Dinkle.
I move that we amend Resolution eleven, 2025 by changing purchase of equipment to services contractual.
It's been moved by Councilman Dinkle, seconded by Councilperson Thompson, that we amend Resolution eleven, 2025 as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so the amendment passes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Dinkle.
I move for approval of Resolution eleven, 2025 as amended.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Dinkle, seconded by Councilperson Hinn, that we pass Resolution number eleven, 2025 as amended. All in favor, please say aye. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? That passes. Thank you, Mayor. Final order of business, please, Michelle.
Resolution 12, 2025, a resolution opposing proposed SB 1.
This is my practice for a filibuster. I'm hoping to do 26 hours. The record is 25 hours.
Make a motion to recess.
No, folks, what we have in front of you today is a well-written resolution by City Councilwoman Hinton with regards to Senate Bill 1, which is now up to 36 amendments. And so for those watching, and for those who don't know, Senate Bill 1 is the proposed property tax cuts that are coming in that are still being fleshed out, and they're still having meetings on, and there's conversations about an additional amendment. With that, I've asked that we table this, but the overarching point still remains until we get that final number of what to put in there. The city of Terre Haute is facing a budget cut, not on par with what we saw in 2008, but you're looking at 7% to 9% of the general fund, because for, you guys know this, but our general fund is funded by property taxes. And what I hope residents will know after, you know, saying it out loud and out loud again, property taxes do not fund our streets. That's local road and street and motor vehicle highway gas tax. All the economic development projects that we're doing, the pool, these infrastructure projects, that either comes from sanitary wastewater or economic development income tax, or we'll luck out and get $34 million from the American Rescue Plan Act, and then of course, we apply for the federal grants with few are still available and the private foundation grants. And I think it's important to note that it looks good on paper, but when you do the math, it actually shifts the burden on residential property owners over time. And I know they're looking at it and trying to come up with some creative ways. I do want to publicly comment to individuals, Representative Tanya Path and State Senator Greg Good, for doing what they can just to keep us involved and engaged on the conversation. This will create some frustrations, and it will require us to do a lot of outside-of-the-box thinking. There will be some conversations with the county because ultimately, what frustrates me the most about this bill is it cuts us in an area where it's assuming that police, fire, engineering, Marcus just brought up how it was so hard to find another engineer, it cuts us in a situation where wages wouldn't even go up. We've got seven union negotiations going on right now. I mean, this is a difficult situation, and we've got a lot to go on, but I just wanted to give that general update. There will be some amendments, there will be some changes, and that's why I'm asking that we hold this so we can get the updated numbers in it. But as you can imagine, it's been a frustrating couple of days back and forth in Indianapolis, and we'll stay on this till the end. Thank you. I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilperson Hinton, did you want to speak to this, since you're the petitioner on it?
Yeah, thank you. I brought it to us tonight because I was concerned, I heard the mayor's cry and concern over the last couple of months about this very bill. Then we've been encouraged by AIM to do something, a resolution, op-ed or something, and so I decided to write the resolution using the language of AIM. And so I'm encouraged that the, that it's being tweaked, and so I'm okay with drawing it for tonight, if that's okay. Anybody else have any comments about the resolution?
Thank you, Councilperson Hinton.
Mr. President.
Sticking with the script of the process, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to Resolution 12, 2025? Hearing none. Councilperson Dinkle.
Mayor, did you say 36, 37 amendments? Something like that.
I believe 36, Anthony, but I went my funds back there.
It's been hard to follow this, and we've all been following this and several other bills very closely. I think the number of amendments of this bill shows how flawed it is. It's the guise of property tax relief when it's just really shifting the responsibility. And it's not, I think there's this misconception that local government is, you know, wildly spending, and I can assure you that's very far from the case if you think that's how the city of Terre Haute operates. The mayor mentioned 7% to 9% of the general fund. As he mentioned, that's fire, police, engineering, city staff, that all provide essential services to the people of the city of Terre Haute. This is not just cutting our big wishlist items, this is cutting essential services. So I'm optimistic that it continues to be amended. I'm grateful to our representatives that have come at this at a very common sense understanding level. That said, I think I still have concerns over the bill as it stands, and I hope that what prevails out of the legislature protects essential services for the people of Terre Haute. Aye.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else?
Just one question, how long do you want to table?
Oh, Councilman Azar, I don't know the answer to that question.
You just going to withdraw it?
If I may, because it's just a resolution, there's no advertising requirements.
Okay, thank you.
It can be brought at any time. We could have a special call in 48 hours.
And then, Councilman Nation, I just want to add a clarifying statement. In no way, I 100% do believe that we do need to do some form of tax relief. I want to make that clear on the record. My frustration with this entire process is a lot of folks, I think, forgot about other options when it came to replacement revenue, and instead they've tried to pigeonhole you all into local income taxes and having to make that decision. So that's why I'm kind of a little bit frustrated that we didn't look at other state types of revenue and it put us in this boat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so if there's no further discussion, Councilperson Hinton.
President, nation, I move to withdraw Resolution 12, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Hinton, seconded by Councilperson Bullard, that we withdraw Resolution number 12, 2025. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It's withdrawn.
Thank Councilwoman Hinton for, we appreciate the effort.
Thank you, Candace. Yes. Michelle, anything? George, you're on.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved that we adjourned by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilman Dinkle. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you.